Joseph County Council is called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation which will be given by Councilman Fig.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Our God and our heavenly Father, we just thank you once again for allowing us to be here tonight. We thank for the blessings we have, the joys of the Lord Jesus Christ. And I just pray tonight, give us wisdoms, we can conduct this meeting, and you'll be honored and glorified, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Next up is petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters. May I have a motion approving the April minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes from the April meeting are approved. Next up are county council board appointments. Mr. Fig?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate John Ferretti and Raphael Morton to the Early Intervention Board, Mark Root to the MAGOC Policy Board, and Diana Hess to the Northern Indiana Historical Society Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to nominate John Ferretti and Raphael Morton to the Early Intervention Board, Mark Root to the MAGOC Policy Board, and Diana Hess to the Northern Indiana Historical Society Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Mr. Ferretti and Mr. Morton are appointed to the Early Intervention Board, Mr. Root to the MAGOC Policy Board, and Ms. Hess to the Northern Indiana Historical Society Board. Next up is a report from our county auditor.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next up is a report from county commissioners.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. And any report from any council special committee. Hearing none. We'll move to first readings. Clerk, can you please read the first bill?
Bill number 59-23, in ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council, establishing per diem for the St. Joseph County Assessor pursuant to IC 36-2-7-13, petitioner Assessor.
Bill number 59-23 is assigned to the Budget and Administration Committee?
Bill number 66-23, a resolution determining that the qualifications for an economic revitalization area have been met in declaring resolution of the St. Joseph County Council, declaring an area of that county to be an economic revitalization area, confirming resolution. Petitioner Prairie View High BTU LLC.
Bill number 66-23 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee?
Bill number 67-23, a resolution of the St. Joseph County Council, declaring a portion of the St. Joseph County an economic revitalization area pursuant to IC 6-1.1-1-2.1, at sequence, declaring resolution. Petitioner Ed Coat LLC.
Bill number 67-23 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee?
Bill number 68-23, a resolution determining that the qualifications for an economic revitalization area have been met and confirming amended resolution number R-13-22 of the St. Joseph County Council, declaring an area of that county to be an economic revitalization area. Petitioner General Motors LLC.
Bill number 68-23 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. That concludes first readings. We will move to the next item on the agenda, which is resolutions. Clerk, will you please read Bill 69-23?
Bill 69-23, a resolution of the St. Joseph County Council honoring Steve Hoffman for his many years of service to the students and families of Christ the King School, South Bend, St. Joe County.
Petitioner?
Before I get started reading the resolution, I would like to acknowledge my esteemed colleague at WSBT-TV, meteorologist Abby Weppler, for making us aware of this outstanding educator. Thank you. Abby, where's your gun? Oh, you moved on me, okay. A resolution of the St. Joseph County Council honoring Steve Hoffman for his many years of service to the students and families of Christ the King School, South Bend, St. Joe County. Whereas the St. Joseph County Council represents all citizens of St. Joseph County, Indiana, and periodically recognizes persons who by their dedication and hard work have distinguished themselves in our community, and whereas Steve Hoffman, a tremendously skilled educator, has been principal of Christ the King Catholic School in South Bend for the past 19 years, and has made huge strides in making Christ the King one of the top schools in the Fort Wayne-South Bend Diocese, as well as a school ranked in the top 5% of all grade schools in Indiana, and whereas Father Tom hired Steve Hoffman to help fix the budget, but Mr. Hoffman exceeded expectations and not only fixed the budget, but pursued a bigger and more lasting calling to run the school and facilitate countless improvements for the students and the community, and whereas, under Steve Hoffman's watchful eye, Christ the King has been nationally recognized as a blue ribbon school, in part due to Mr. Hoffman's creation of a national Junior Honor Society and the expansion of classroom aid positions to facilitate one-on-one learning where possible for every student, and whereas Steve Hoffman has always focused on hiring only certified teachers to educate children both academically and spiritually, and never wavered from this goal even during the present teacher shortage, and whereas Steve Hoffman has always focused on providing teachers the means to excel and tirelessly pursued grants and other resources to help fund technology, security, STEM programs, and other teaching, teacher training courses, and whereas Steve Hoffman has prioritized student and teacher safety, implementing magnetic locking doors, the Raptor Security System, and security cameras for the school facilities, and whereas Christ the King provides a strong sense of security to students, parents, and school, community members, resulting in many parents choosing to send their children to Christ the King School because of such security, and whereas, under Principal Hoffman's oversight, students have attained significant success both academically and spiritually, and Mr. Hoffman has expanded the school's outreach to add a daycare for staff, as well as a three-year-old and pre-kindergarten program for the school, and whereas Mr. Hoffman was a huge contributor to the school expansion project and was successful in implementing an in-house school lunch program, and whereas Principal Hoffman maintains that his biggest achievement is the outstanding level of preparation his students are when they leave Christ the King School, as the students have both social and academic skills to thrive in high school and become better members of our community, and whereas Principal Hoffman may not be permanently retiring, but his work at Christ the King is now complete, and he deserves recognition for his many, many service-related accomplishments. Now therefore be it resolved by the St. Joseph County Council that, Section 1, on behalf of the citizens of St. Joseph County, Indiana, and the St. Joseph County Council, we proudly and publicly recognize Principal Steve Hoffman for his lasting impact on St. Joseph County, and by extension, the residents of St. Joseph County, and extend our appreciation and thanks to him for his many years of service to the students and families at Christ the King School. We will forever be indebted for his dedication and service. Section 2, the St. Joseph County Council wishes Steve Hoffman and his family many years of health and happiness moving forward, passed and adopted this ninth day of May 2023. I just want to say, I can't believe he did all this in just 19 years. Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There has been a request for a public hearing on this resolution, which I will grant, and so is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this resolution? You can come to the podium, and you'll have three minutes to address the council.
My name is Pat Matthews. My wife and I are here today, 52127 Fall Creek Drive, Granger, Indiana. That was a very moving and amazing resume for Mr. Hoffman. Couple of things I'd like to add. We've been at the school for approximately 27 years, and Mr. Hoffman has been there 19, and he's done an amazing job. One of the things that was not mentioned in there was the amount of stability that Steve has brought to the community and to the school, and I would like to bring that to your attention and thank him for that. Thank you.
Clerk, can you please sign in? I should remind everybody to please sign in if you decide to speak.
Andy Castelni, 52860 Juneup Road, South Bend, Indiana. There has been a member of my family, the Colchis family, at Christ the King School as long as there's been a Christ the King School, and Christ the King's a very important, very special place to our family and to lots of families, and I can't think of a person who better exemplified the spirit of Christ the King than Steve Hoffman. Three of my kids went there, two of my grandkids have begun going there, but Steve, not just the stability, but the sense of Catholic and Christian values every morning, rain or shine, he's out greeting kids as they're getting dropped off from school. He's had almost a different tie for every of those 19 years that he's been there, which I don't know how the heck he does it, but Steve made Christ the King just a special place, a place that you wanted to send your kids, that you wanted your family to be a part of, so I can't think of a better person to be honored tonight than Steve. Thank you, Steve, for 19 years of service to all of our families.
My name is Christopher Huff. I live at 1831 College Street, South Bend. I'm an alumni of Christ the King Elementary School. Go Saints. Saints, I think? Kings. Christ the King, kings, isn't it? Yeah, that's right. As did four of my brothers, or my other three brothers. I don't know this gentleman specifically, but I do go to Mass quite often at Christ the King. It's got a big reputation, long-term reputation, for excellence, and I've been in contact with several of the nuns that I had back in those days, some of which you may know, but it's a wonderful, wonderful school, and there are many other school districts that could take a lot of lessons from Christ the King. Thank you, and congratulations, sir.
Is there anyone else who would wish to speak in favor of this resolution? In all fairness, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the resolution? Seeing none, we will move on. May I have a motion on Bill number 69-23?
Move for passage.
Second. A motion to approve made by Mr. Morton. It was seconded by Mr. Tanner. Is there any further counsel comment on this resolution? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The resolution is approved unanimously.
Carl Baxmeyer, President of the Board of County Commissioners. I want to thank Mr. Morton for making us aware of this honor, and I can't compete with the list of accomplishments that were noted in the resolution, but I will say, several weeks ago, I had the pleasure, privilege of going to the dinner for Christ the King School, talked to many people, and the one thing I came away with in talking to them was the respect and admiration that the community has for Mr. Hoffman. Boy, you know, teachers, educators, administrators, they touch the lives of our most precious resource, which is our children, and his accomplishments and what he has done at Christ the King over the last 19 years is really to be commended and recognized, and on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we're pleased to have the opportunity to present the key to the county to Stephen Hoffman, and please join me in congratulating Mr. Hoffman.
Mr. Hoffman, if you'd like to address the crowd, the podium's yours if you like. You don't have to.
Come on. No pressure.
Again, I'm just so pleased that he got this, so thank you so much for all you do. Best wishes.
Stephen Hoffman, 1203 Pioneer Place, Mishawaka, Indiana, 46544. I don't know, I really, really appreciate this honor. I love the kids, I love what I do, so to me, I was just doing my job like I always do, and I thank everybody for saying all the nice things about me. It'll be things I remember forever, and things I do forever, and I'll remember Christ the King forever, and I appreciate the board approving this. That's pretty much, I guess, all I can say right now, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is salary amendments. Clerk, will you please read the first bill?
Bill number 61-23, in ordinance amending ordinance 115-22, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner Archives.
Thank you. Committee report, please, Mr. Shetzel.
Bill number 61-23 was, we asked that they reestablish, rework the numbers, and then bring us that information, so did we get that favorable? We did not.
No recommendation.
No recommendation. Thank you. Yeah, no recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner? Go ahead.
Katrina Carter, St. Joseph County Archives, 1140 South Lafayette. So today, or last week, I worked with John Murphy and reworked the numbers. We changed the retro date to May 6th, so that allowed us to remove the healthcare cost, which was the part that was in question, and that did leave us a little bit of funds left that we did move to contractual services for destruction if the changes happened downstate with the microfilm, where we won't have to convert digital to microfilm, then I'll have a lot of destruction that I'll need to do from the ARP funds you guys gave me, so those were put there. If the destruction doesn't happen, then the $8,800 will go back to the county, but, so we worked it out and removed the part that was in question, and this does make it budget neutral for 2023.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing none. We'll open to public hearing on this bill. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing none. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing no one in the room, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed on Bill number 61-23. May I have a motion on the bill, please?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve was made by Councilman Fig. It was seconded by Councilman Tanner. Is there any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Let the record show that Bill number 61-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill?
Thank you.
Bill number 63-23, in ordinance amending ordinance 115-22, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner IPG.
Mr. Thomas, committee report, please.
Mr. Shalio. Oh, comes with a favorable recommendation, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Petitioner?
Hi, I'm Mr. Shalio. I'm confused. Economic Development Director, part of Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on 7th and 11th floor. Before you today, we're just asking to transfer $5,000 from the Economic Development Planner position to the GIS Technician position. The salary is such with the Economic Development Planner that there was $5,000 left over for the remainder of the year. We just want to move that over to the Technician position, get that position funded at a level that's a little more appropriate for the skills and work scope being done. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for the petitioner? Seeing none. We'll open to public hearing on this bill. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill?
Is it really that?
Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill?
I don't know.
There's somebody there, Jen? No.
One crossbar, I'm not saying.
Hearing no one, we will close the public hearing on Bill number 63-23. Is there a motion on this bill?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilwoman Morton. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
And President Root?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 63-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next bill, please.
Bill number 64-23, in ordinance amending ordinance 115-22, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner Adult Probation.
Committee report, please, Councilwoman Drake.
Bill number 64-23 comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening, Jesse Carlton, Chief Probation Officer with the Adult Probation Department, offices located on the fourth floor of the County City Building. The request this evening is just on appropriation of grant funds that we have received from the Indiana Office of Court Services. This covers the expenses related to one supervisor probation officer, one line probation officer, and their benefits accordingly.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing none. We'll open to public hearing on this bill. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing no one. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Again, seeing no one. The public hearing on Bill number 64-23 is now closed. May I have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion made by Councilwoman Hess and a second by Councilman Shetzel.
Sure.
Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 64-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Could you please read our next bill, clerk?
Bill number 65-23, in ordinance amending ordinance 115-22, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner Adult Probation.
Thank you. Committee report, please, Councilwoman Drake.
Bill number 65-23 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening, Jesse Carlton, again. What we are requesting this evening, we have a grant for a local Justice Reinvestment Advisory Council Coordinator. The grant funds for that position do run out in June of this year. We would like to fund this position through the remainder of the year by paying for it out of the probation user fee fund. This will allow us to continue the important work that we began with the statutorily required group.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none. We'll open to public hearing on Bill 65-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed on Bill number 65-23. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve was made by Councilman Thomas. It was seconded by Councilman Tanner. Any further council discussion on this bill? Seeing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Bill number 60-23, in ordinance appropriating and transferring monies for the purpose herein specified for the several departments here enlisted of St. Joseph County Government.
Thank you. Let's finish Bill 65-23 and declare that it was passed by a vote of nine to zero. We've had the reading now, moving on to public hearing, we've had the reading of Bill 60-23. All of these items were heard at our April committee meeting and discussed by the council at that time, and so we will move right to a public hearing on this. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any part of Bill number 60-23? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to anything in Bill number 60-23? Hearing none. The public hearing on Bill number 60-23 is now closed. May I have a motion on Bill number 60-23?
Motion to pass, with the exception of Part E, which I'd like to table.
I'm sorry. Clarify what part of that?
Part E.
Part C or E?
E.
E. All right, we have a motion on the floor to pass Bill 60-23 with the exception of Part E, which will be tabled. Any council discussion on this motion?
Mr. Root?
Councilwoman Drake?
This, I'm wanting to table based on the Health Department grant. It's designed to integrate equity into our overdose program. Obviously, I have no problem with the overdose program. I have no problem providing better access to Narcan in our community, which this grant helps to do. Narcan reverses overdoses, and our health officer wants the grant for this reason, and I'd like to support him. However, this grant is troublesome to me because it's not straightforward. It also is designed to push a political ideology, and in this case, it's equity. Remember, the goal of this grant is to integrate equity into the overdose program. Equity sounds deceptively like equality, but it's actually quite different. Equity is a political term that advocates giving one group more, one group less, or taking away from one group to give to another. Equity comes down to a redistribution of resources, obliterating meritocracy and reverse discrimination. An example of this is during the height of COVID, New York, Minnesota, and Utah issued guidance for allocating monoclonal antibodies that heavily prioritized racial and ethnic minorities. It's obviously wrong to redistribute people's access to healthcare based on race. We do not want to accept racism in any form. Equity policies are currently being put into place to dismantle what those on the political left call "systems of power" and "white supremacy." Our Health Department website already gives credence to these ideas with a whole page challenging America's current government and structure. I hope it will be taken down, so that is the reason for why I would like to table Part E. I'm hoping that we can talk to the grant institution and see if we can divide the grant up so that we can focus on the good parts and not take the ideology parts.
Thank you. Any further council discussion on Bill number 60-23? Councilwoman Hess?
Okay, well, I would object to Councilwoman Drake's description, definition of equity. That is not what the program, what that word means. It is to allow an opportunity for all people to be treated equally. This is an overdose prevention program. It's Narcan, and I believe this was passed forward favorably from the committee meeting, and at that time, Dr. Serbin, who is our health officer, said he was in favor of this. And at that time, Dr. Serbin, who is our health officer, said he was in favor of this because it would save many lives, hundreds of lives in our community, and I think that is the bottom line here, that we're trying to save lives in our communities. So I don't know if I can ask Dr. Serbin to speak, but...
Thank you. Councilman Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, the politicization of a word, it doesn't matter if you're reading the Oxford Dictionary, the Webster Dictionary, any other source, go online, it is about being fair and impartial. If anybody is introducing politics in this conversation, it is you, Councilwoman Drake. This was approved by our Republican Commissioners, our bipartisan Health Board, and our dutifully elected, or rather appointed, health officer. Please, do not introduce your own politics into this conversation that is bipartisan, supported by multiple levels of government. I'm sorry, but that's all I have.
I would just like to point out that if...
Ms. Drake?
Sorry.
I'd like to point out, if you go to the website, on the Health Department's website, you can see that it's clearly talking about equity in the way that I'm describing it. That's my reason. If they could clarify that that's no longer where they stand and want to take down their site, then I could get behind you, but at this point, I can't.
Any other further council discussion on Bill Number 60-23? Questions?
Ms. Drake?
So, because it was moved and seconded to remove Section E?
So, right now, the vote would be to pass everything and table Section E.
In the past, we've always had that on an individual basis, haven't we?
We could. I'll defer to our counselor here on the proper procedures to...
And if somebody had an exception with certain parts of it, they would just vote with the exception of certain sections, right?
That's what we've done.
That's what we've done in the past.
And we are voting on the motion, not the actual action.
Thank you.
Mr. Root?
Any further, who? Mr. Shetzel?
I would ask Mr. Tanner that you take a look at the website, and while I sit down and had a conversation with Robin, Dr. Serner, today, which was a very good conversation, I still have to look, I still look at the website and have serious concerns about the language used. The word can have other meanings, and the language on the website seems to align with those more radical meanings. So I would encourage you to read that. Thank you.
Any other further counsel comment on this bill? Just as a reminder, the motion is to pass the bill and table Part E. Hearing no further counsel comment or discussion, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
No.
Mr. Katanzerite?
No. I just...
Mr. Tanner?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
No.
That was no?
No.
Okay. President Root?
Yes.
Passes five four.
Let the record show that Bill Number 60-23 was passed by a vote of five-four, Parts A, C, D, F, and G passing, Part E being tabled until the next council meeting.
Mr. Root?
Mr. Katanzerite?
Just want to go on record and say I was not against any portion of that bill, or any of those bill, any portion of that bill. My vote no was strictly for the opposition to the Health Department grant, because I do believe Narcan's essential and don't want to see its WAR, the Health Department, from getting access to Narcan. So I was in favor of passing the bill in its entirety, like it was agreed upon, leaving out a committee.
To be clear, we still have to vote on the rest of the bill to be passed, correct?
Oh, that was the entire bill.
Your concern, Mark, is unwarranted. We still get to vote.
Let me just check. Councilman Drake, what was your motion again?
Motion to pass with the exception of Part E.
It was a motion to pass, I believe.
That is correct.
Like Mr. Katanzerite, I also approved of everything in that financial matters, which, again, we approved, we moved everything forward favorably, and once again, we're putting over $100,000 of money on works, denying that because of, again, two people on this council, really, who are leading the way in, I think, a very extreme way. Thank you.
Mr. Root, may I respond?
What?
May I ask you?
Mr. Shetzel?
Thank you. We're, I would like to see the, the grant, look at the grant. There are just a couple of things there that I object to. I would like to see if we can carve those things out. I would also like to make note that hundreds of people are not going to die because we said no here today, or we tabled this. I believe, Mr. Dr. Serbin, I believe that we do have, in fact, how many doses of Narcan do we have available at this time in the county? Could you testify to that, please, sir? Would that be possible? Thank you, sir.
Dr. Serbin, Public Health Department, offices on Eighth and Ninth Floors. I believe that we have, and Robin, if she's on, can correct me, I think it's like 3,900 was our last shipment. The part of this bill is to expand the access points of that Narcan, access points. The analogy I would use is that when we first came out with defibrillators, they were considered very high-tech, very dangerous, they're only put in a few locations, but as we found and made those defibrillators very easy to use, we put them in more and more places with more and more positive effects. I had a discussion with Councilman Shetzel, and I think our intention on this grant is not to be political. Our intent is totally, when we talk about equality, it's more inclusive, because we want to include a lot of people in it, including law enforcement, we want to include the schools in it, the jail in it, we want to include a lot of the addicts that are part of this so they can help mentor people to get off these drugs. I really, and I'm new at the department, but I really don't see this particular part or bill being that political. I would really like to see it pass, kind of as a clean bill, and it helps the taxpayers not pay as much money for the Public Health Department, which is always a good thing. We do have other law enforcement communities that are asking for this. These boxes that we have, they're just put there, and they're easy access, and we restock them, and there's several other police departments that want to have them in the county. I just think it's a good thing. The travel requirement is a requirement by the grantor, not by us. In fact, we did not want to do that travel component. They made it a condition of accepting the grant, so it's not our fault. And it's basically, the travel component, the education component mainly has to do with talking with these other two communities, how to get all these other stakeholders involved, such as the law enforcement, the jail, some schools, community organizations, and indeed, the mental health facilities that are available, the mental health treatment people, and the addicts recovering and active. The opportunity to get clean comes now and then. People overdose on this stuff because the drugs we're getting right now are way more potent than they've been in the past. Whether this is intentional by the people bringing these illegal drugs in or not, I don't know. I don't know those people, but it's bad. I don't think this has a nefarious political process. I really don't. And I really think it would be useful.
Can I ask a quick question?
We're past the time of discussion, so I want to move on. Thank you, Dr. Serbin. It concludes the public hearing on public comments and fiscal matters. Next up is land use planning. Clerk, will you please read our next bill?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Katanzerite?
Is there a procedure to reconsiderably?
Yes, there is.
Have we passed that point?
No, we're not. That could go until the end of the meeting. Any member who voted in the majority has to make a motion to reconsider, and then it may be seconded by any member of the body. And that could happen now, that could happen under unfinished business, that could happen under new business. It's, as long as the session is alive, that motion is available to any member who voted in the majority.
Understood. And I just, I know you afforded the opportunity for Dr. Serbin to come up with Mr. Shetzel's request. I just would, just make one more further comment. I wish the majority would reconsider. Yes, we do have several, well, somebody said 3,000 doses, but not every law enforcement officer in the county's got one in their squad car. Apparently, that's what Dr. Serbin's insinuating, and no matter if it's 100 or if it's one single life, I'd hate to see anybody not have the tools they need in their hands to administer Narcan. So I really wish the majority would reconsider before the end of the meeting to allow that to go forward. I don't think we're trying to politicize it. I don't think, I think Dr. Serbin confirmed that, but thank you, Mr. Root.
Thank you, Mr. Katanzerite. Mr. Murphy, will you please read the next bill?
Bill Number 41-23, an ordinance to vacate a public way or public place located wholly within the unincorporated portion of St. Joseph County, public way or public place. Petitioner, Deborah Lukowski.
Mr. Fig, committee report, please.
Came, favorable recommendation from Land Use Committee.
Petitioner, or, I'm sorry, Area Plan?
Yes, Sean Klein, Area Plan Commission Staff, with offices on the 11th floor of this building. So this is a petition to vacate an unimproved alley right of way north of Glenwood, east of Eastview, in Penn Township. You might recall, this came before you for a public hearing a month ago, at which time the property owner of the two parcels in the corner, the northwest corner of Glenn and White, remonstrated on the grounds that he might want to use this alley to access the rear portions of his lots in the future. Consequently, we have removed that from the legal description. We have not received any remonstrance to the portions shown on the screen now, which reflects what's captured in the legal description of the current ordinance. Staff recommends that this portion of the alley right of way be vacated, and I believe the petitioner is online.
Are there any questions from the council for Area Plan? Hearing none, petitioner?
No questions.
Go ahead.
It looks good to me. I think that is exactly what the neighbor's looking for.
Okay. Okay, thank you. We will now open to public hearing on Bill Number 41-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the hearing is now closed on 41-23. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilman Fig, it was seconded by Councilman Shetzel. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Nine zero.
Let the record show that Bill Number 41-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill?
Bill Number 53-23, a resolution of the St. Joseph County Council declaring a portion of St. Joseph County an economic revitalization area pursuant to IC 6-1.1-12.1, at sequence. Petitioner, Prairie View High BTU LLC.
Thank you. Committee report, Mr. Fig?
Yes, Mr. President, Bill Number 53-23 comes to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening, Bill Shalio, Economic Development Director, part of Department of Infrastructure and Planning and Growth, offices on Seventh and Eleventh Floor. On April 3, 2023, Prairie View High BTU LLC submitted a tax abatement, a personal property tax abatement request for new equipment that they plan to install on land that is leased from Waste Management out at the Prairie View landfill. The project will convert landfill gas to natural gas at this location. The gas will then be sent off-site through a pipeline where it will then be packaged and to be able to be used for other projects. The petitioner plans to invest $30.5 million in equipment designed to take this gas and produce this new pipeline quality gas. This is the declaratory resolution, so this project helps Prairie View to retain two current employees and add two new employees. Average wage for these new employees is anticipated to be $28.85 per hour plus benefits. Petitioner is requesting the council consideration for a five-year abatement. They filed all of their forms and fees. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. There are representatives from the company here online if any specific questions about the project.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we'll move to public hearing on this bill. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing on this bill. May I have a motion?
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion to pass was made by Mr. Morton, it was seconded by Mr. Shetzel. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 53-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill?
Bill Number 54-23, a resolution determining that the qualifications for an economic revitalization area have been met and confirming resolution number of the St. Joseph County Council declaring an area of that county to be an economic revitalization area. Petitioner, AM General.
Thank you. Committee report, Mr. Fig?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, Bill Number 54-23 comes before the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Petitioner?
Good evening. On March 6, 2023, AM General LLC submitted a tax abatement request for real and personal property tax abatement at their facility on McKinley Avenue. The petitioner intends to expand the existing building and purchase additional machinery and equipment to produce a new vehicle for the military. This property is located within the AM General Economic Development Area. It's also located in County Council District I. The petitioner is seeking a tax abatement in the form of a real property abatement for seven years and a personal property abatement for five years. The real property is on 8.8 million, and the petitioner intends to invest 59.5 million for the equipment. There are representatives here from the company. If there's any questions, this is the confirming resolution, so this is the last step in the four-step process for a tax abatement. Any questions? Any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for Mr. Shalley or any of the representatives from AM General? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing on this bill. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing no one, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Online? Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed on this bill. May I have a motion?
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion to pass was made by Mr. Morton. It was seconded by Mr. Fig. Is there any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Kattanze, right?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passed as nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 54-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill?
Bill number 55-23, an ordinance to terminate written commitments concerning the rezoning of property generally located at 5450526 Street. Petitioner MFD II LLC.
Mr. Fig, committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President, bill number 55-23 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Area Plan?
Abby Wiles, APC Director. The proposed rezoning is on State Road 23 between Northern and 26th Street. Whoops, excuse me. In 2006, it was rezoned office district with written commitments that restricted the use to office buffer uses. Here is a copy of the existing written commitments that the property is subject to, and photos of the existing office building. Photo along State Road 23 and looking the other direction. The site plan shows the existing conditions. No alterations are proposed. The removal of the written commitments will allow an office, medical office, to go into the, one of the existing suites that I, my understanding is for sports medicine. So in looking at the state code criteria for a rezoning, staff finds that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The current, are the properties being currently used as office space, which is the most desirable use. There are no physical changes proposed to the site, conservation of prop, there will be conservation of property values. The office uses provide a low-intensity transition between the commercial and residential portions, and it is responsible growth and development. This comes, this came with a favorable recommendation from the County Council, as well as the APC in a six-zero vote. No one spoke in remonstrance or in favor at the APC hearing. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for Area Plan? Seeing none. Petitioner? Will you please state your name and address for the record? You have five minutes to address the council.
Nathan Flickner, Whitman, 1402, Mishawaka Avenue, 46615, and just here to answer any questions you may have for me.
Any questions for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll move to public hearing on bill 55-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, may I have a motion on bill 55-23?
Move for passage. Also, Mr. Root, I've gotten no remonstrance from anybody calling me about this. It's located in my district.
Thank you, Councilman Kattanze. Right. Did you make the motion, by the way?
Yes.
Okay, and a second by Mr. Morton?
Yeah.
So we have a motion to pass made by Councilman Kattanze, right, seconded by Mr. Morton. Any further council discussion on this? Clerk, can you please take the roll?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Kattanze, right?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passed as nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 55-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill?
Bill number 56-23, an ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Use, Chapter 154 Planning and Zoning of the St. Joseph County Code, as amended for property located approximately 28.5 acres at the northeast corner of State Road 933 and Douglas Road, from U University District to PUD Planned Unit Development. Petitioner, University of Notre Dame Duloc.
Mr. Fig, committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President, bill number 56-23 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Area Plan?
Yes, Sean Klein, Area Plan Commission Staff. This is a petition to rezone a portion of Notre Dame property at the northeast corner of 933 and Douglas Road, from U University District to PUD Planned Unit Development, to allow for a mixed-use development with townhomes, apartments, commercial, and office To the north of the site, within the town of Roseland, there are businesses Zone B Commercial District, as well as single-family homes and apartments that are zoned, our residential district. To the east and to the south, our portions of Notre Dame's campus, Zone U University, and to the west, across 933, are more businesses within the town of Roseland that are zoned B Business Commercial District. The site is more or less vacant currently. This is the site of the former University Village Apartments. The preliminary site plan, which was submitted, is subject to change. The rezoning is the first of a two-step process for approving these planned unit developments. The rezoning just generally approves this for the, for the land uses, finding that the area is suitable for them. The petitioner will have to come back through with a more detailed site plan and all information necessary to demonstrate the complete feasibility of the project, including drainage plans, approved access, utilities, et cetera. So all of the specifics, including the building placement, will be worked out during secondary approval, at which time they'll have to submit a final site plan, which the development will be bound by. The preliminary site plan shows that the townhomes are being proposed during the, at the north portion of the property, near the single-family and multifamily residential uses within the town of Roseland. And then when you get closer down towards the intersection is where you'll see the multifamily and the commercial uses. It's also showing two accesses on to 933, which will be subject to in-depth approval, as well as two accesses on the Douglas Road, which will be subject to approval by the county engineer. The permitted uses within the PUD are those within the R2 Residential District, which allows for the townhomes and the apartments, and then the O Office, B Business, and C Commercial Districts, with the exception of a list of excluded uses for things that just really aren't appropriate for this development or location, including things that take up a lot of space and have a lot of outdoor storage, like motor vehicle sales and the like. The proposed PUD comes with a set of development standards, which are either in excess of what is required by the zoning ordinance in terms of landscaping, parking, et cetera, or at least the equivalent of what is found currently within the zoning ordinance. When looking at the five state law criteria, staff believes that it meets each of these criteria. The site is appropriate for mixed-use development, as it's served by two arterials. It has utility connection, or will have utility connection to the city of South Bend in terms of sewer and water, and it's consistent with the mixed-use feel of the town of Roseland. This received a recommendation from the Area Plan Commission, six-zero. No one spoke in opposition, two spoke in support. And once again, this rezoning would be the first phase of the two-phase PUD approval process, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Any questions from the council for Area Plan? Seeing none. Petitioner?
Thank you. Mike Dance from Dance Hardin Associates, 1643 Commerce Drive here in South Bend, representing in the petitioner, University of Notre Dame, and also the management company that'll be taking care of this particular project, which is Buckingham Properties out of Indianapolis. As Sean had mentioned, what we're asking to do is take this 29 acres, it's right on the northeast corner of 933 and Douglas Road, and take it from university zoning to the PUD zoning. Sean did a great job of explaining exactly what is going to happen here. It will be a mixed use. The plan that you see before you here is a preliminary site plan. Down by the corner, right at the corner, there'll be a large drainage area. If you've been by this particular site, that's already a drainage area now. That'll be incorporated into this particular development. The developers are working with the state of Indiana. That particular retention area is also draining water off of 933, so that will be incorporated into this particular development. The blue buildings that you see on the plan are going to be some mixed retail uses. Those will be four- and five-story buildings, but it'll also have 354 apartments as well. As Sean had mentioned, up along the line between this particular property and the town of Roseland, you'll have the townhomes that we had mentioned that will go there. Those will be three-story townhomes. We wanted to step down what was going on as far as density was concerned, so that is up against the single-family residential that's in the town of Roseland. That's also adjacent to where we had done previously the married-student housing that you see up at that northeast corner. Along Douglas Road, there'll also be some senior housing, 55 and over, there'll be 77 units of that as well. The development, because it will be a PUD, as Sean had mentioned, there's about a 19-page document that actually takes care of all the developmental standards within the site. What that does is it allows for where buildings can be located. This particular development wants to be more pedestrian-oriented, so what you're seeing are buildings that are right up close to the driveways where the parking areas are, where you don't have a 40-foot setback. That was the reason for the PUD, to allow for all that to happen, along with the height of the buildings that you see, and along Douglas Road. As Sean had mentioned, we're having two access points on to 933. Those have to be approved by the state of Indiana. Buckingham Properties presently is working with the state to take care of any questions that the state would have, and whether there would have to be a traffic impact study for this particular development. They're working with Sky Meadows, county engineer, for the two driveways that you see on to Douglas Road. Those have been set back away from the intersection of 933 and Douglas, which is obviously a main intersection coming in to the city of South Bend and also into Roseland. This is to be a gateway type of development. Nothing on the Notre Dame campus, up on this portion of the campus, has been done. More of the, this type of development where it's pedestrian-oriented has been done on the south side. We did have two people speak in favor of this particular development at the Area Plan Commission meeting. As Sean had mentioned, the next step of this is to do the real engineering work to get this to meet all the drainage standards for the county. They will come back and actually do a finalized engineered site plan that'll be approved by the staff and all the departments within the county. This is also unique because this is going to be serviced by the city of South Bend, sanitary sewer and water. City is well aware of this particular project. Buckingham Properties is working with the city as well to make sure that the mains that would be extended, the sanitary sewer and the water lines, are adequately sized to handle this type of development and the scale of the development itself. The other thing that'll end up happening is, is that they'll have conversations with the fire department. The fire department has say-so on what you're seeing for the location of the buildings, the interior driveways, and how access is there in case there is an emergency for this particular development. Everything that you see on the interior are all private driveways, so those will not be dedicated streets, but they will be maintained by the, this development itself. One of the other things that happens here is that Notre Dame will continue to own the property. They're only leasing it out to the Buckingham Properties for them to do the management of this. So this property will be Notre Dame's the entire time. They're not selling anything. And if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Mr. Kattanze?
You said fire department. You referring to Clay Fire Department?
Yes, yeah, Clay territorial. There are some drives within this particular development that I want to make sure that they're, they're going to be able to handle that. They'll determine the size of the drives that come in, their radiuses, all that. One of the other things that I wanted to make sure of is, is that the construction period for this, assuming that we would receive approval, would probably be the spring of 2024, and they were figuring on estimate of this development at probably about $150 million.
Any other comments or questions from the council for the petitioner?
Mr. President.
Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple weeks ago, I met with some other representatives of this petition with one particular question as it relates to the fire territory being able to service this property. Because the PUD allows for 90-foot height before architectural elements may increase that beyond, I wanted to ensure that the Clay Fire Territory was able to properly service that with the current apparatus they have. My question is only if that question has been asked of Clay Fire and responded in the affirmative.
That will be one thing that they will definitely be taking a look at as part of this. And that was one of the things with the PUD development that goes on. So not only would the, the Clay territorial fire department be doing this, but also the Notre Dame Fire Department as well. And obviously, if there's a major response, then you still have the city of South Bend that would be here, too.
Of course. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill number 56-23. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Christopher Huff, 1831 College Street, South Bend. It's hard to get perspective from sitting in the back, but originally, when the tollway was built, the ramping system, that spur road that goes between the toll booths and what was the former US 31 here, it was bridged and ramped. The land that the ramps, the circular ramps were on or occupied, is that part of this development? And if so, has it been vacated by the state, and does Notre Dame own that now? If anybody doesn't know what I'm talking about, I'm here.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anybody online who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion on 56-23?
Move for.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Mr. Morton. It was seconded by Mr. Shetzel. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Kattanze, right?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passed as nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show, bill number 56-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. That concludes our land use planning bills for tonight. Next up is unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Mr. Tanner?
Mr. Root, thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. President. And respectfully, even if this is an effort in futility, as a point of order, or at least as a point of record, following the close of business on bill number 60-23, not only was an assumption made by myself, which was shared by our counsel attorney, as illustrated by the confusion following the vote regarding what the vote was for, but when pointedly asked by me during discussion whether we were voting on the motion or to remove Part E from the action to pass the bill, our counsel attorney advised it was only for the motion to remove Part E. My question, and perhaps my request, is that we might be in a situation where we should reopen business. Whether or not that inaccuracy warrants the vote, null and void.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Root, and thank you, Mr. Tanner. I did misunderstand the motion, and Mr. Tanner is correct that when he asked me, I responded based on how I interpreted the motion. His point is certainly with merit. Up to the council to decide how to proceed. Certainly, if there is concern about whether the vote is void because of perhaps misunderstanding on my part, while we're still here, here now, it might be easier to clean up with a revote, but... But I'm not concluding that that's an absolute necessity, though.
And if I may, I'm not calling you out.
No, I appreciate it.
Jamie, I respectfully appreciated your interpretation and just took it on face value. We happen to be in... And on the outliers of how that was interpreted.
So, Mr. O'Brien, is this a case where the council president has jurisdiction or the full council, or what would be the procedure here?
Yeah, so I think the cleanest procedure would be to simply revote. But I think you have the discretion as to whether to go down that pathway or not.
So to do this according to Robert's Rules of Order, I will make a motion to reconsider bill number 60-23. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. The motion being made by a member who voted in the majority, the second being a member, any member of the body, to reconsider vote and vote on bill number 60-23. Clerk, will you... Is there any further council discussion on that motion?
Mr. Root?
Let me get over Mr. O'Brien.
Right, so let's make clear what the vote is.
The vote now is to bring bill 60-23 back to the table under a motion of reconsideration.
Right, this is not a vote on the bill.
This is not a vote on the bill, this is to put it back on the table. Any further council questions or discussions on the bill? Mr. Kandry?
Just a point of information. I know we talked about the numbers of fatalities. I did check with our deputy coroner. Just maybe this might help anybody make a decision tonight. There have been through April, unfortunately, 40 drug-related deaths in our county. And he states that we are on track. That's more than we had last year. On track to have more deaths than normal with narcotics.
Thank you, Mr. Kandry.
Confirmed that during the meeting tonight.
Any other further council discussion on this motion? The motion to put 60-23 back on the table? Hearing non-courts, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Shetzel?
No.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Kandry?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mrs. Drake?
No.
Mr. Root?
Yes. Let the record show that the motion to reconsider bill number 60-23 was passed by a vote of 6 to 3. That means that the motion or the bill is now back on the table. May I have a motion on bill number 60-23?
Motion to pass.
Ms. Drake?
Motion to pass with the exception of Part E.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion to pass bill 60-23 was made by Ms. Drake with the exception to table Part E.
She didn't say that. She didn't say that.
What did you say?
Motion to pass with the exception of Part E.
You didn't say table.
Not going to table it this time.
Motion to pass with tabling Part E. Is that how I should say it? That's my intention.
Okay, that's your intention. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Second. All right, so a motion to pass bill 60-23 and table Part E was made by Councilwoman Drake. It was seconded by Councilman Thomas. Any further council discussion on the motion? Just to be clear now, we are voting to pass 60-23, but table Part E with this motion.
So I... Yes, yeah, I guess my question becomes, is there going to be a genuine effort to talk to the health board and try to work out some of these differences or concerns?
Yes.
Within...
Within the next month.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Yes, Ms. Hess.
I don't know if I can ask Dr. Serbin if this grant is in jeopardy, if this vote is delayed. That's a question I have. Do you know if it's in jeopardy?
Is there any way to find that out? Because, I mean, if there's going to be an effort to actually work out some of the concerns, then we find out that because of the delay, we still will not receive it, then that's definitely an exercise in futility. Mr. President.
Mr. Shetzel?
I believe the finish date was sometime in July. So we do have... We do have a little time here.
What does that mean by finish date?
The time that the grant is... By the time the grant is to be completed.
So... So we really are running out of time on this grant. If they're going to complete it in an appropriate manner, it looks like there is a bit of a deadline here that we're facing. Vote will be brought up by the next public hearing. Which is June.
President Root?
Which is June, which gives them...
No, it's March 23rd, maybe, or May 23rd.
Unless we do it at our special meeting. We're looking at June, which gives them less than a month to complete the grant.
Well, that gives us a month to complete it.
President Root, this is Robin Vida, Department of Health. May I have permission to speak?
Yes, go ahead.
Robin Vida, Director of Health Outreach Promotion Education, St. Joseph County Department of Health, offices on the 8th and 9th floor. This is a grant that I currently work on through my HOPE team. The deadline for this grant completion is correct July 31st. However, as this is a deliverable grant, with the next deliverables needing to be completed by the end of this month, without deliverables being met, we will not be reimbursed money if the money that is technically owed us through this grant, that is not complete. I... When we think about this grant and the use of health equity as it relates to here, we are looking to what Dr. Serbin mentioned, fairness and access to resources for all people here in St. Joseph County. Specifically, this grant is to work on the inclusion of individuals with past or individuals with past substance use history. So those individuals living in recovery to help guide our efforts locally. All money, it's a $100,000 grant. That is providing more than half of that money in support of local efforts here to address substance use and overdose efforts. Last year, 100 people died due to overdose. This grant, a large piece of this grant supports awareness to those that may see themselves as recreational users, as well as access to naloxone boxes, which are 24/7 access points for Narcan, which we know can aid in the life of somebody who is overdosing. These 15 boxes would be placed throughout the county that has hit the hardest with the least amount of access to Narcan, which tends to be our more rural, outlying towns and townships. We see that the county does not have funds to...
Interesting.
...give to these efforts, hence the need for us to look for the external grant funding for these resources. I'm more than happy to answer additional questions. I know this was passed favorably through council. It's clear to what the use of this is. The work that's been done with our two mentor communities was completed so that we could use this money for our efforts locally. And with the need of naloxone increasing our drug supply shifting, I'd hate for us to lose the opportunity here to provide that additional access. And even more important, though, awareness that this grant would allow us to do, to potentially save individual lives. I hear Councilwoman Drake's concerns. I'm open to clear conversations on how the Department of Health will look to ensure that we work for all people in St. Joseph County and ensure that the conditions are optimal for all people to have the opportunity to have optimal health. And that's really what we're looking at when we wrote for this grant, was to do just that. Provide the resources to areas that we do not have funding to provide. I'd hate for us to miss this opportunity, specifically because our smaller communities are depending on that ability. If we choose to not pass this, I am fearful that we will not make those deliverable deadlines. Therefore, losing some of that money will provide those opportunities. And I would ask the council then to consider how else we can use other monies to replace those naloxone boxes and other efforts we had intended to do with this grant. Thank you.
Oh, President Root, can I ask you a quick question? Thank you. Robin, in our conversation today, the deliverables deadline did not come up. What do you mean by deliverables? What does that mean?
Thank you for asking that clarifying question, Councilman. And I apologize that I did not cover that. So a deliverable-based grant means that there are three separate times throughout the entirety of the grant that we have certain things to accomplish. So we have, for example, this grant's deliverable deadline is the work from February of this year to February 31st, which was to include meeting minutes with our mentees as well as a virtual and/or onsite site visit. All of the work we do is then reimbursed at a specific amount of money. If we don't complete that, we don't receive the money that the organization has earmarked for that specific activity.
So what is it that you may not be able to complete by the end of the month? If you... See what I'm saying? The deliverable that you won't be able to?
The deliverable for the site visits will not be completed this month. And I think I'm just unclear with, like, the ability to continue working, like, towards the next deliverables. I know Lorraine County, and I've already spoken about doing a virtual site visit at the end of the month, as well as... I know you and I discussed the site visit that was missed today because these appropriations were still being waited on. So I would assume the greenfield one would need to be a site visit, excuse me, a virtual site visit as well. I'm just concerned that if I don't know to move forward, then if I don't turn in that work, then that's a portion of that grant that we won't be reimbursed for. I shouldn't even say reimbursed, we won't be paid for it because no money has been spent from this grant since it's not appropriated yet.
The site vision portion.
Correct.
Is there any further council discussion or questions on this bill?
I'd just like to ask, Robin. Robin, you mentioned that this Narcan would be available in sites that aren't currently served, some remote sites in our county and townships. Can you identify any of those sites? Do you have those identified?
We have some of them. So we see, and what we've been doing is we've been working to identify our hotspots of EMS runs that see a higher proportion of EMS runs for overdose. So I have had discussions with Mishawaka Police Department about placing a permanent naloxone box on the outside of their city hall, as well as a naloxone box down in Wackerton, where their EMS chief has been working to secure more access to naloxone there. New Carlisle as well is another area. And then working currently with areas out in the Penn, Harris, Madison, Osceola area.
Thank you.
Any further comments by the council?
Robin, can you tell us what the date is that you're referring to? What the exact date is that you need your information?
So the deliverable deadline for this chunk is May 31st.
So with the other, if this is... What number is this? This is the second or the third in the different...
This is the second.
So what happened with the first one? Because you guys weren't funded at that point either.
Right, we did that. And I know, Amy, our administrator is not on, but I believe we submitted that, those deliverables. And I'm not sure if that money is just sitting in limbo in the county budget or what, but I have in all honesty asked because I know we can't spend it. So if we are... And also, full transparency, it was my understanding if something was tabled at public hearing, it had to wait a specific timeframe before it could go back into committee. And if that's the case, then we would more than likely miss that.
I think the correct is table doesn't kill it, but if a bill is defeated, it may not be brought back for six months.
Okay.
But if it's tabled, isn't she saying she's going to lose out on some of the monies that are out there for us to receive?
Well, I think if they don't do deliverables, they lose all of it. If they don't meet all three deliverables, they lose all of it. Is that correct, Robin?
We would lose the deliverable amount attached to the deliverable. And I was looking here... For my schedule. Give me just a second. It is a specific amount. It is... Yeah. My deadline here just states, it's not the specific amount, which I could, I will find an email to you. But if the intention is to rehear this in June, then I would operate under, I'd keep, I guess, doing the work, submit the deliverables, do the virtual site visit, and then come back in June. Is that correct?
If the bill is tabled, that's how it would work, yes.
Okay.
If the bill is defeated, then it would be done for six months.
I got you. Thank you for that clarification.
President Root, so if the bill is tabled, we cannot address it in the May 23 meeting?
We actually could address it May 23, yes.
We could address it May 23.
Yep, we're going to get to that next, but we could technically address it May 23.
What do you mean, address it?
I mean, we could take action at that time, yep.
So, Robin, if we decided to vote on May 23, would that make a difference as far as you achieving the deliverables? Which is, what, two weeks from now?
Right. If it is, if I understand correctly that I would continue doing the work, submit my deliverables as written, we vote on it on the 23rd. It goes, if it's passed through committee, goes back to public hearing, then yes?
No, no, you know, I'm saying we vote at the committee meeting. Special meeting, that's what I'm saying. Special meeting on the same night.
Oh, then I would make sure that I was ready to submit that deliverable on the due date.
So that would make a difference?
It would make a difference, yeah.
You're saying, would Dr. Serbin, any comments on this conversation?
Five business days, but she indicated she could do that.
Yeah, we haven't gotten to the part on the agenda yet about calling the special meeting on the 23rd, so that might be the confusion.
Say that again, Jamie, I'm sorry.
We haven't gotten to the part on the agenda where I anticipate council is likely to call a special meeting on the 23rd. So that might be the confusion. Ms. Robin might be thinking of committee meeting.
No, she is. No, she is. But I guess it really comes down to what Dr. Serbin just stated, that it's still pretty close to impossible. I'm not trying to put words in your mouth.
Difficult.
Difficult.
But difficult, but doable? I mean, I still have a couple of questions I'd like to get answered. And I think that's how close I am, Robin. If we could table this till the 23rd, get a couple more questions answered? Do you think, if we table it till the 23rd, can you get the work done?
Of course. And I believe commissioners would have to approve it again as well. Oh, the commissioners would approve it at their next meeting, okay.
Mr. President. Mr. Tanner?
Thank you. Robin, I appreciate your patience through this process.
Robin, I appreciate your patience through this process. Is it fair to say that you felt and the department felt enabled to work on this, on this effort under the guise of receiving the grant because the commissioners approved of the grant back in January?
Correct, yeah. The contract was signed January 24th, and that, for me, felt like the, the largest hurdle. And then the NHO, the National Association for City and County Health Officials, to then have them sign it to fully execute the contract, which came almost immediately after the commissioner signing it.
So, is it fair to say that the actions required within that contract were approved, but the fiscal support of appropriating these funds were not? So, I don't think you're out of bounds for having continued to work on this. We would just run the risk of losing out on those taxpayer dollars that would have been reimbursed and the time spent if we do not approve the appropriation of these funds.
Correct.
And this has been a now five-month process with plenty of opportunity for these questions to have been asked and answered. That's an opinion of mine, I'm just expressing that, not asking for a response. So, I hope that from what we've heard from Councilman Catanz Wright about the number of deaths that we've already had this year from narcotics, the pace that we're on annually, the position that we've put the taxpayers in, and the work that has already been completed that my fellow members of the council would be willing to pass this tonight rather than pursue further duress for the health department to complete this and meet those contractual obligations. That's, again, a request of mine. Thank you.
Any other further council comment at this time? Hearing done. Clerk, will you please take the role on the motion?
Can we hear the motion one more time, please?
Joe Bryan, would you, I'll let you?
Right, so as I understand it, the motion is to pass the bill, except tabling letter E.
Correct.
Correct?
And if that motion fails to pass, there's an opportunity for another motion to pass in full?
Correct. If this motion fails, there could be another motion to, because if it fails, right, there can be a motion to pass all five parts or all, all the parts, or perhaps just letter A and none of the rest.
Right. And if the motion passes, then we can address E in two weeks.
We already have a motion.
I know, but if the motion passes, we can address E.
Well, we're not there yet. We need to take action on this motion first. So, Clerk, will you please read the, or please take the role on the motion? Mr. Martin?
Understanding this, these different motions, so yes on the motion and no on E? Does that, does that make sense?
No. A, a yes vote would pass it with E tabled. A no vote would enable an opportunity for a future motion to be considered.
So, but an?
This motion could pass or it could fail, but it doesn't mean that we don't have the option to still pass these budgetary options. We could still pass a different motion following the failure of this motion, potentially.
This seems?
Then we're done.
But an amicable vote, though, you can vote on each part individually. So, you could vote yes on all the other parts and no on E, or no on the, the motion for E.
Yeah, that would not.
That's why, that's why I'm asking for this clarification, because there's a lot of confusion, obviously.
That would make it fail, correct, so. Yeah. So, we don't?
So, I guess my vote is no, then.
Mr. Feg?
Okay, my turn. I didn't hear Mr. Morton. He said yes or no?
He said no, I think. He voted no, Mr. Morton?
Okay, I'm going to say yes.
Ms. Sess?
No.
Mr. Catanz Wright?
For the same reasons I mentioned earlier, I'm going to say no. I just can't see us risking any life over something as important and as easy to get to as Narcan, and I'll say no.
Mr. Tanner?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes, and I would respond to Mr. Catanz Wright, that I don't think any lives are going to be at risk. I think that we have the doses, they're out there. And I look forward to a couple more questions being answered in a week and a chance to revote.
President Root? Yes. Passes five, four. Motion passes five, four. All the parts of Bill 60-23 except for E are passed. E is tabled at this time. Is there any more unfinished business? New business? We're going to call a special meeting for two weeks from tonight, May 23rd, 2023, following the council committee meeting to deal with matters concerning a tax abatement. And so, it has been, President has, I think, the, the right to call a special meeting or with the majority of the council.
With the majority of the council.
Which we discussed in our caucus, and there was majority support to, uh?
I would, I would recommend just confirming majority support for the special meeting.
Okay, so, is there a motion to call a special meeting for the night of May 23rd, 2023?
So moved, Mr. Root.
Motion made by Councilman Catanz Wright, seconded by Councilman Tanner. Any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Root?
Uh, is that Mr. Catanz Wright?
Yes, will we also reconsider point E of 6023 that evening?
Is that a separate motion?
It would be, it would be a separate motion at that night to bring it, or, I mean, we can make the motion now, or?
So, so for the notice that we have to publish 48 hours in advance?
Make the motion now.
We need to identify the topics, which?
Right.
Right now, I believe the anticipation is the General Motors abatement, the Development Agreement, and then whether the NHO, Nacho, that grant would potentially be the third. When the notice is posted and sent out to the media, just those items that are on the notice, that's all that can be considered at the special meeting, so.
Again, what is our, what is our deadline for advertising?
Well, it's 48 hours, you have plenty of time.
So, we would have until next week to formalize an agenda?
Okay.
Why don't we just put it on there now? I mean, there's agreement. Mr. Shetzel's saying he only has a couple of questions, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean, if a council member wants to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
To what?
To put letter E on the agenda for May 23rd.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Putting letter E on the agenda for the May 23rd meeting will now be part of the motion, the main motion, to call a special meeting on May 23rd, 2023. Is there any further discussion?
Letter E on 60?
From the budget matter, the $100,000 Nacho grant.
Yes. Is there any further discussion on the main motion? Hearing done. All in favor of a motion to have a special meeting on May 23rd, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, there will be a special meeting on May 23rd with at least one agenda of item being item E from tonight's agenda. Any other new business? Hearing done, we will now, yes?
Don't we need to, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to clarify. Don't we need to say item E on Bill 6023? Not just item E? Or is it me?
I think I was pretty clear that's what it was, but?
Well, you didn't say that.
You're, you're right. I, I will make absolutely clear.
You just said item E.
He said the Negro Grant, didn't he?
Well, okay, that's, that's my point. But it was, it was, no, that's assumed, that's assumed that it was 6023.
6023.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morton.
Any other new business? Moving on to privilege of the floor, limited to three minutes to any item not on tonight's agenda, please sign in and state your name for the, uh, an address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council. Just as a reminder, this is not a council-public conversation, this is a time of public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlisle. I'm speaking to those online, anybody in here who, for whatever reason, chose not to vote the last election cycle. This is your fault. This is what we get. We get people playing word games with people's lives and the blood is on your hands for not voting and for continuing this nonsense.
Mr. Caruso, please, we are not addressing items on tonight's agenda.
Good evening. My name is Virginia Sepola, and I reside at 22045 Sandy Brook Drive. And I respect all of you, I know you're doing your personal best to make the right decisions. I want to bring to your attention that on May 4th of 2023, Dr. Don Westerhausen appeared at 6:30 in the morning on the lawn of Mrs. Amy Drake. One of the organizers included a man named Fernando Malone, a convicted felon, who was arrested twice, though not convicted, of child molestation. I am shocked that this kind of behavior is happening, that with, and I heard you, some of you comment and say she's extreme, that behavior on her lawn with her seven children is extreme, that people could protest at her lawn that morning. So, I didn't know if you were aware, hopefully now you are. Thank you.
My name is Carla Meekoff, and I live at 15245 Durham Way East in Granger. As a registered nurse and obstete, obstis-, I'm sorry, obstis-, I can't even say it, I'm an O G Y N nurse. I'm sorry. I would like to speak in favor of St. Joe County opting in the Indiana's new public health infraction law SEA4. Having a healthy population is key to our state's success. By preventing health problems rather than just treating them, Indiana can foster healthier families and a stronger workforce. In 2019, CNVC ranked Indiana fourth in the nation for life expectancy, 11th worst for obesity, and 10th worst for smoking. In addition, there's a nationwide crisis in maternal mortality with Indiana one of the highest rates. Senate Bill 4 would incentivize local health departments to improve the quality of their services by establishing the Local Public Health Services Fund Grant Program. The grant program would support local health departments that opt in to provide core public health services recommended by the Governor's Public Health Commission. These services include, but do not limit to, screening for health, childhood, I'm sorry, screening for childhood lead exposure, inspecting public buildings for sanitation, partnering with schools to support student health, preventing tobacco use, and reducing suicide. Funds for grants would be determined by the state budget, but SV4 would ensure applicant, applicant counties receive a minimum grant of $350,000 with additional funding determined by population size and the health vulnerability of residents. SV4 is clear that all local health department authority will be maintained under this legislation and states, "A county that accepts additional funding to provide core public health services does not transfer any authority under statute in operating the local health department to the state department."
Ma'am, your time is up.
In return for additional funding.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amy Gaither Miller. I live at 344 South Sunnyside, and I am, I just am so unhappy that the local Democratic Party supported going to Amy's house on Thursday. That is what I call deplorable. I mean, really? I'm so ashamed of you. You are wrong, and you're mean, and you're bullies.
Next.
Yes, my, my name's Daryl Heller, 425 Lamont Terrace, and Trina Robinson at 914 Lincoln Way West. I'm reading a statement for Trina, her voice is gone, so I'm speaking for her, and actually speaking for myself as well. I, I'm not reading anything I don't agree with and support. I mean, it appears that there's been a great deal of discussion about this demonstration press conference that was held at a particularly council member's house, Amy Drake, on May 4th. It appears that said council member was quoted in the Federalist as referencing our press conference as domestic terrorism. They were further quoted as citing the FBI's definition of domestic terrorism as appearing to be intended to influence the policy of government by intimidation or coercion. Sadly, they missed the mark. The NAACP has never been known for violence, but we are known for disrupting the status quo. We are known for achieving equity, political rights, and social inclusion by advancing policies and practices that expand human and civil rights, eliminate discrimination, and accelerate, and accelerate the well-being, education, and economic security of black, of black people and all persons of color. We are, we are, we are here to educate and inform, something that you could have done. You really missed the mark for a teachable moment for your children, to teach them how democracy actually works. Instead, you instilled fear in your children. Children do not learn how to be racist or bigoted or portray biases, it's a learned behavior that generally comes from within the home. Those who are gutting the equity work of the health department, can you just imagine that mother last fall, last August, watching her son being gunned down by the police in the presence of neighbors, clergy, and friends because he was having a mental health episode? And just imagine if services had been available, it would possibly have saved his life, yet you voted against it. Can you imagine how the residents of Portage Manor must feel, not knowing from day to day if they will be able to maintain the place that they've known only as their home, yet you voted against that as well? You have considered, well, have you considered what the residents of every zip code except 46530 must be thinking about what's going on, what's going to happen to the residents of motels for now if resources are not available, yet you voted against that as well? WVPE's Jeff Parrott published an article about the press conference, and he quoted Steve Sanders, an Indiana university law professor who specializes in constitutional law, who stated that it is fully within the protesters' First Amendment rights as long as the protesters stay off private property, don't block access or travel, and don't threaten violence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nimby Lashaw Cushing. My address is 51760 White Stable Lane, South Bend, 46637. I am confused about the recent accusation made by County Councilwoman Amy Drake in response to a non-violent orderly press conference in front of her home. Today is the first time I'm hearing any mention of persons being on the lawn, that was not in any report I saw. Councilwoman Drake cited the FBI's definition of domestic terrorism as appearing to be intended to influence the policy of government by intimidation or coercion. The definition is open to the subjectivity of the reader. It in no way presupposes the First Amendment, which says in part, "It protects freedom of speech, the press, assembly, and the right to petition the government for a redress of grievances." The county council had ample opportunities to respond to the grievances made by the NAACP and private citizens who appeared at public meetings. As no amicable agreement was reached, a different course of action was necessary for the benefit of thousands of St. Joseph County residents, including children. Ms. Drake's claims there is no such thing as a peaceful protest. The 10 individuals in front of her home had an average age of 62. They carried signs bearing words that could not have frightened her children and certainly not any reasonable adult. They did not chant, they did not wield weapons of any type as compared to the attack on our nation's capital two years ago, which I would consider domestic terrorism. As a political figure, Ms. Drake should have considered the possibility of such activities. Demonstrators showed up in front of Mayor Mueller's home last August. Similar events took place in front of the home of Justice Brett Kavanaugh. They marched and chanted. Should Councilwoman Drake have been afforded a higher privilege than a member of our highest court? Drake should have considered the possibility of such activities. Demonstrators showed up in front of Mayor Mueller's home last August. Similar events took place in front of the home of Justice Brett Kavanaugh. They marched and chanted. Should Councilwoman Drake have been afforded a higher privilege than a member of our highest court? One way for her to avoid any future demonstrations in front of her home might be to follow the course of former South Bend Council President Tim Scott. He resigned. Thank you.
Melanie McGuire, 51976 Quail Valley Drive in Granger. Our family moved to northern Indiana in August of 2020. We were already frustrated with what was becoming more and more obviously a disastrous global management of a pandemic. We wondered if anybody in this area was going to speak out or was speaking out about the insanity of it all. One day, I happened upon a nationally circulated article about local parents in St. Joseph County, speaking out and fighting mask mandates and fear mongering in a local school district that turned out to be my new school district. I realized I needed to learn about local politics and get more involved. This was my introduction to the excellent work of Amy Drake. I was thankful then and remain thankful for her bold effort to bring some sanity to the conversation locally, statewide, and nationally. That sanity came in the form of questions, research, and reason. She dug deep and she asked the right questions and she showed up. And she was right. Even the CDC is admitting that much of what she and thousands of others have been saying all along. Masks are ineffective. mRNA injections have not stopped spread. They've not immunized anybody against COVID and they've done very real harm. She was right. In my conversations with Councilwoman Drake, I have been impressed by her compassion. She fully acknowledges the decisions before the council are hard. Lives are impacted by them. She takes them seriously. She applies the same research and reasoning she has since the beginning of this public health battle. She's fair. It's a disgrace that anybody who hasn't sought to have a reasoned conversation with Amy would show up outside of her house in the wee hours of the morning, twisting our protection to freely assemble by making it personal like thug intimidators, turning our right of assembly into a bully tactic. It's public. You publicly assemble. All you had to do was behave like a human being and have a conversation with her. She's very reasonable. Unless every one of them, Dr. Westerhausen and his wife in particular, since they are held up as respectable professionals in this area, are here to publicly apologize tonight, you have much work to do, much self-reflection to do. Councilwoman Drake and the rest of the council, thank you for your efforts to bring common sense, accountability, and responsibility back to St. Joseph County.
Next.
Ron Wilson, 6230 Crown Court, South Bend, Indiana. This is my first time up here. Just a little background, I grew up in a small town called Kingsford Heights, about 10 miles from Walkerton, going west. It was built for the purpose of bringing southerners up here to, to work in the munitions plant during Second World War. I grew up in a small town with small-town values, I guess, and one of those would be respecting those around us. And I'm speaking to everyone on the council and including myself. Solomon, the wise man said, it's better to go to a funeral than it is to a banquet. Because at a funeral, you're going to look at yourself and say, one day it's mine. That's going to be my stone with my name on it. I think we should give some value to what we're discussing tonight. I, I saw this about drugs. Where are the drugs coming from? Is there a place where we could stop some of that? Possibly. Also heard the word politicization. That also came from one of the people on the commission up here. I'm thinking the group that went to Amy's house probably had a political ideology behind him and kept that going. Anyways, I sat here thinking to myself, I'm a retired school teacher, South Bend schools, 23 years, loved my position. They would have called it an inner-city school, Studebaker, loved it, loved the kids, loved the, the opportunity to teach there. It was a place God called me to be. Anyways, what, what comes to my mind is you seem to be stuck on the letter E or something on one of the, one of the, whatever that's law or whatever you're passing. And what comes to my mind is, I see, I look up here and I see great minds in front of me. I'm thinking you probably could reword that in such a way that there wouldn't be a conflict over it. And as far as getting drugs for the people that need it, that's a great idea. But I'm wondering, when I think about the lockdowns that happened and the closing of the schools and all that, hmm, I wonder if that was handled right. Thank you.
I'm Deborah Dural, 21677 Autton Road, South Bend. Thank you for your work tonight. The processes for the updated comprehensive plan and the I E C overlay, Part Two, are still ongoing. So again, I wish to support the challenging discussions and goals of giving equal voice to concerns and issues that have often been rated less important than development. Complaints and disagreements are inherent in an authentic, productive process, and I think it may be a good sign that the developers have complained about not having enough input compared to the past. Many other voices that have been minimized are now at the table and trying to work together. It's not easy to break new ground and take the parts to create a whole. I'm happy to support a process that aims to give equal voice and move the fulcrum toward a balance and spread the word when it happens. Intense research and deep dialogue is occurring to benefit long-term policy. We are hopefully maturing into a wise age of understanding that the why, how, where, and when of our actions is equal to development and the foregone conclusion that waste and loss to other interests as the price of doing business is on its way out. I feel we are over-compartmentalized and nimbying each other to our collective detriment. I have a list of at least 12 ways over the last few years that we are nimbying each other. The old fences, new lines, jurisdictions, territories are festering the old wounds and we can and need to build strong bridges with real people on all sides. An issue for one of us is an issue for all of us. A great model to come out of the county work recently, and I think a welcome first for St. Joe County, is the two-stage ditch and buffer easements for the Nesbitt Johnny ditch on the Sebastian Land in the I E C. This and the expanded wetlands are a welcome result and a beautiful compromise of infrastructure and environment that ticks off several goals by the local and broad community here. Thank you.
My name is Sherry Weldy. I live at 13350 Kingsville Court, Granger, Indiana. And I really appreciate all of you that spend the time doing this for St. Joe County. I just have a quick comment on what happened with Ms. Drake. What first comes to mind is growing up where you're taught do unto others as you would have them do unto you. And if I live by that, then I would like others to do the same, but I think we can do better than what happened to her. Thank you.
My name is Marilyn Gashaw and I live at 2514 Kenwood, South Bend, Indiana. This has been an eye-opener for me. I don't usually attend your, your particular meetings, but I want to say that I find it a shame and sad that some of you vote to give tax abatements using my tax dollars for brick and mortar projects, but elect to refuse grant money to save lives possible, possibly, because those lives-
We do not address items that are on tonight's agenda. Please keep your remarks to things not addressed in tonight's meeting. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
For privilege of the floor, we do not address items that were on the agenda such as the tax abatements or the healthcare grant or other items. This is a time where you may address any issue not on the agenda, but we don't have comment on issues that we already had a public hearing on.
Okay. Thank you.
Craig Coburn McDonald, 6223 Winslow Court, South Bend, Indiana, 46614. I want to thank you for all you do. I know you guys do not have an easy job and I would not want to be where you're at. But I got to say, Portage Manor, Portage Manor, Portage Manor. I just hope that you guys consider all the proposals that will be given to you about Portage Manor so that you can keep these residents together in the home that they know. And I thank you very much. Have a good evening.
My name's Steve Weldy from, I live at 16657 Cleveland Road in Granger. I'm also here to speak because I'm very disturbed about the recent event of political intimidation against a sitting council member, Amy Drake, and her family. Democrat leaders and party activists organized a protest at her home. Please don't insult our intelligence and call it a press conference. A press conference is something you do at your office, at the county city building, or if you're trying to bring attention to Portage Manor or a motel, do it there. To the other, to the people that, most of the people involved, I really don't have a lot to say as they probably don't know any better. The only thing I would say to them is that if you think that tactics like this are helping your cause, you're sadly mistaken. While your cause may be worthy, your actions are not. Yes, they did protest at Brett Kavanaugh's house. Their actions also attracted an attempted assassin who was there to kill Justice Kavanaugh and his family. To Don Westerhausen, you should be ashamed of yourself for participating in this activity. It's understandable that you tried to hide behind your sign. You're a disgrace to your profession. You've held yourself out as someone qualified to hold public office. Thankfully, the voters disagreed. If you had any decency, you would resign from your post as a leader in the local Democratic Party. To the council members, I would ask, have, have any of you apologize to Mrs. Drake? Raphael Morton, I know you to be a-
It's not time for questioning the council. It's your time to comment.
Okay. I know Raphael and to be a very good man and the others seem to be very good people. I'm just asking, have you considered apologizing to her or calling-
Now is not the time for council questions. It's time for your comments.
I would urge the council, all of you unanimously, to call out this behavior. The residences, the families, and the children of our elected officials should just be off-limits, period.
Christopher Huff, 1831, College Street, South Bend. When I worked in Crook, Crook County, Cook County, sorry, there's reasons for generalizations, you know? There was an economic development newsletter over there that was talking about the state of Indiana, the great things in the state of Indiana that are going on. This is about 12, 13 years ago now. Now, they did call out South Bend as an unusual character, you might say, in Indiana, in that it was not attracting a lot of private development. What it was attracting was a lot of 501(c)(3)'s and social service industry organizations. And as all of you know very well, there's a lot of social service industry companies and organizations here in St. Joseph County, some of whom you have worked for. Now, at the same time that this is happening, the crime rate in South Bend was skyrocketing. And in fact, there are 466 cities in this, in the United States, over 50,000 people. 10 over a million people. And South Bend rates 28 out of 466 cities in the United States for violent crime. I'm sure you've all heard of this. If you haven't, I would highly recommend you go back and look at the statistics. This does not make me feel very good about the social services industry in this county and this city. They have failed. They have failed the people of this community and I'm sick and tired of their nonsense. I expect every single one of you, I don't know if this is on or not, I expect every one of you to ask questions that are pertinent to any organization that comes before you and before us ultimately. So I applaud, I applaud those of you who are asking questions and particularly of people like this right behind me who parked at the Democrat Party headquarters right before I arrived. You do your job and we're going to get along just fine. If you don't do your job and you don't ask questions and you don't put, you do not put these people on notice, what the value is to this community, and I don't care if it's a grant, because grants all come out of our pocket. Sorry, ma'am, but they do. Thank you very much.
Don Westerhausen, 52346, Spring Arbor Court in Granger. I just would like to point out that equity is actually a healthcare term. The American Cancer Society has the three Ps of equity: people, place, and partnership. So as we all probably know, the term equity refers to fairness and justice and is distinguished from equality. Equality means providing the same to all. Equity means recognizing that we do not start from the same place and must acknowledge and make adjustments to imbalance. So what does that mean? Health equity involves the breakdown of barriers such as discrimination and lack of resources that lead to those inequalities. It means recognizing some demographics require additional resources and opportunities in order to reach their full potential. I do have a problem with people who say reverse discrimination because sometimes I believe that that's a projection of racism itself. So as, as far as, as far as any act that I've done as a public, as a public official versus a private citizen, I've done nothing illegal. I've followed my First Amendment rights. I'd do it again. Thank you.
Public outbursts will not be tolerated. Are there anybody else in the room who would like to speak during the privilege of the floor? Seeing none, is there anyone online who would like to speak? Laura M., go ahead.
This is Laura McClellan. I live at 6344 Indian Point Road, Leroy Township, Ohio. My brother resides at Portage Manor in South Bend and my mother resides in Mishwaka. I grew up in Mishwaka. My brother has lived in Mishwaka and South Bend his entire life. I'd just like to again ask everyone on the council to please consider what the closure, the potential closure of Portage Manor would do to him and other vulnerable residents like him. I've started looking at all so-called alternatives for him. He is under 65, well, under 50, which makes placement more difficult. And the places that I've heard about that supposedly might be suitable for him, I would honestly never, ever consider. For instance, Mr. Shatzel has discussed various physical limitations to Portage Manor, but I am more concerned about the actual care of the residents, the care that they receive from everyone at Portage Manor, whether it's a housekeeper who keeps an eye on him and notes if he's sweating too much or showing signs of distress. It's the groundskeeper, the maintenance person, who helps him find his glasses out on the lawn when, when they drop while he's, while he's outside and can't find them again. These are, these are people, these are special people who only care about the residents. They don't care about, they're, they're not in it for the money. And I have never seen any other place like it that actually truly cares about their residents. It's a family and I, all I can do is beg you to please, please consider what you might be doing to these real people. He really doesn't have another place to go. He can't live with me. He can't live with his mother because she just moved into assisted living. He can't live in a nursing home. Where is he supposed to go? I, I really, I, all I can do is ask you to look into your hearts and consider this when you vote again on June 13th. and consider this when you vote again on June 13th. Thank you.
Is there anyone else online who'd like to speak? See none. Privilege of the floor is now closed. Next up is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
There are second? We have a motion to, and a second to adjourn. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned.